It is one o'clock. I will speak, I will speak, I will speak into the microphone and call this meeting of the Douglas County Planning Commission to order. May we have the Pledge of Allegiance? Everyone is present. Lori Lyle will lead us.
Let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is now time for opening public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker on manners over which the Planning Commission has jurisdiction. The Planning Commission wants to encourage respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If content is disruptive, disrespectful, irrelevant, or offensive, the individual will be asked to stop speaking. Public comment will also be taken on agenda items that are identified for possible action, and we will have closing public comment. I will now open public comment. Speakers will have three minutes, as was said before. Please sign the roster, say your name for the record, into the microphone. First speaker, please.
My name is Kirk Walder. I am speaking today as both a planning commissioner and as an individual. On March 17th, a public records request was sent to the Douglas County Manager and Assistant District Attorney. It requested all emails for the years 2022 and 2023 from eight past and present county employees and myself in my capacity as a member of the Planning Commission. The individual making the request specified any emails that included 10 terms or names of private individuals, including myself. This request was a follow-on to a similar one made by the same individual in November 2024. Let me state for the record that I support transparency and the public's right to obtain relevant public records. I have fully complied with this request, turning over numerous emails to Deputy DA A.J. Haynes. But I find this particular request, made of nine people for two years of emails, that might mention any of 10 subjects and individuals, to be a witch hunt and fishing expedition of epic proportions. A focused public records request is valid, but one so overly broad in terms of time and individuals seems designed to harass, burden, and place an undue restriction on freedom of speech and communication. And in my specific case, where the request identified my personal email, it included a false accusation that I considered defamatory and libelous. I applaud my fellow panel of planning commissioners and the hundreds of county employees and private citizens that serve on county boards and committees. It is regrettable that public service should bring exposure to actions such as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Seeing no other speakers, I will close public comment. It is now time for approval of the agenda for possible action. Are there any corrections to the agenda? Any changes? No comments? Do we have a motion?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
We have a motion by Bryce.
Second.
Second by James McCallum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now time for approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bryce, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Lori. Motion by Bryce, second by Lori. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Public hearings, number one, for possible action. Discussion to approve four related development applications for a parcel of land within the Clear Creek Tahoe specific plan and plan development. One, master plan amendment application DP 24-0264, reverting the future land use designation of a .85 acre portion of an 8.64 acre parcel from recreation back to receiving area. Two, zoning map amendment application DP 24-0265, rezoning the same .85 acre portion from PR, private recreation, to SFR 8,000, single-family residential, 8,000 square foot minimum net parcel size. Three, major modification application DP 24-0267, revising the tentative subdivision map for Clear Creek Phase Nine subdivision Unit Five, to reduce the number of parcels from 19 to six. And four, minor modification application DP 24-0266, updating the Clear Creek Tahoe pages. Specific plan for consistency with these revisions. The parcel is located along the east side of Golf Club Drive, east of the intersection of Gray Mill Court and Summit Camp Way, in the Indian Hills/Jacks Valley community plan. The applicant's representative is Chris Wachter.
Yes.
Kim Lee Horn, and the owner is Leisha, Leisha Ellert, Clear Creek Residential LLC. APN number 1419-03-002-170. Lucille Rayo presenting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry for the mouthful. For the record, Lucille Rayo, Senior Planner. The request before you includes four applications for the final phase of Clear Creek. It is important to note that the master plan amendment request is for a portion of the 8.64 acre parcel going from recreation to receiving area, and a zoning map amendment to go from private recreation to single-family residential 8,000. Both requests will bring the parcel into conformance as it is currently split zoned. The request is also a reduction in the number of parcels currently approved at 19, reducing to six parcels. As the final phase of the project, the applicant is required to provide proof of purchasing and recording 385 transfer development rights prior to recordation of the final map. How did this parcel become non-conforming? In August of 2024, staff processed a boundary line adjustment, including the .85 acre portion of the neighboring golf course, zoned private recreation, to the 7.79 acre portion of the existing SFR 8,000 parcel, thus creating the 8.64 acre parcel. Why are they asking for receiving area? With the update of the 2020 master plan, the receiving areas of Clear Creek that were developed received future land use designations associated with their zoning. Therefore, the golf course parcel receiving area was removed and replaced with recreation land use. All of these changes resulted in the requirement to request a portion of the 8.64 acre parcel to change their land use designation from recreation to receiving area in an effort to rezone the .85 acre portion of the parcel and commence with development of the family, of the single-family homes. Staff is recommending approval of the requests. Findings are on packet page 54, and the conditions of approval begin on packet page 61. Today, we have Chris Wachter from Kim Lee Horn with a short presentation for you.
Chris Wachter for the record. Thank you for your time today.
Before you get started, I want to thank you for all the supplemental information you provided.
Oh, absolutely. Yes. Yeah, Chris Wachter for the record with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. I'm the civil engineer on the project and be representing Castle Hill Partners, who owns the project. The, so the overall development, we came to you back in August on this same Unit Five piece, but as a refresher, Clear Creek Tahoe is a 1,600 acre development. It's in the Indian Hills/Jacks Valley area. It's got a variety of amenities, a golf clubhouse, golf course, and other associated, you know, pool and such. It's mostly comprised of single-family residential in the area, and it is approved for 384 residential So it's completion progress so far. Everything you see in gray has been constructed, or not constructed, but recorded in a final map. The construction improvements are pretty much done for all the phases except for the one in red, mainly that is being worked through. And eight of the nine phases have been recorded. 332 lots have been sold already of the 384. 109 homes are, have been constructed and are occupied, 44 under construction, and 33 are under design. So there's a slew of applications in front of you today. There's four of them, and these, first is for a zoning map amendment, and that is to change the .85 acres on this parcel from private recreation to SFR 8,000, which the remainder of the parcel is. A master plan amendment to change the land use of that same .85 acres from recreation to receiving area, which is similar to the rest of the land use throughout Clear Creek Tahoe. And a major modification to the tentative map, that's probably the, one of the biggest items in front of you, changing the reduction in the number of lots from 19 to six. And we wanted to reflect those six lots in the design configuration of the tentative map, and then reflect that remaining density to not change that 384 units as part of other parcels to be allocated transfer of development rights, as Lucille mentioned. And then a minor modification to the specific plan to update the specific plan and reflect those changes for Unit Five. So the first dives into the zoning map amendment, that is the change from private recreation to SFR 8,000. Just a quick history, I think Lucille covered it well, but, you know, in February of 2022, we came before this body as well, and in another major modification that had happened. And at that time, we had included acreage to be set aside for Unit Five, which included that .85 acres. However, we did not go through the formal process of changing that zoning of that .85, and also had not completed the boundary line adjustment for that .85 acres yet, which recorded in August of 2024. So what we are doing here is we are changing that .85 acres to officially move into the SFR 8,000. That was our intent then, but it is what we're trying to officially do now. And I think that's all I have there. Thanks. The master plan amendment will do similarly. It will change the .85 acres from recreation to receiving area to reflect that boundary line adjustment. And then the major modification for the tentative map, so that's the reduction in the 19 to six lots. We wanted to show what that looked like back in August of 2024 and what we are proposing now. So you can see, the homes were not lauded. It was more of a common area approach, to be more densified on a single lot with a shared HOA, to maintain that open space. But instead, we are proposing a single-family lots, which is typical to the rest of Clear Creek Tahoe, and these are a lot more spread out, and there's certainly less of them. We're going from 19 units to six. The, in addition, I just wanted to touch on the transfer of development rights. So the, in the specific plan and in this tentative map, we wanted to reflect the areas in which are receiving that 13 units, that's remaining of Unit Five. The development isn't interested in changing the amount of total units, as that has been set aside in the HOA, as well as, you know, other utility commitments within the actual PUD for all of Clear Creek Tahoe. So we'd like to keep the number of units, 384, the same. But we do plan to transfer those development rights to other parcels, which we've indicated on the shading, which was provided in your materials of where those could go. And that will have to be, those transfer of development rights will have to be recorded before the Unit Five final map is recorded. And then diving in a little bit further, as you can see, most of the land use for the area is receiving area. That's that area shown in orange. And, you know, as shown on the transfer of development rights application, or some of the text from there, it says transferring of development rights to a specific parcel does not guarantee the applicant the ability to develop all available units on the receiving parcel. Development rights may be transferred from one receiving area to another where access to units have been transferred. So that is our intent of the receiving area transfer of development rights in those 13 Is it on? Okay, there we go. The minor modification to the specific plan is just to update the remainder of, or the Unit Five configuration within the specific plan. So we're showing those six lots instead of the 19 units we had before. So this middle and the applications in front of you will not change any of the utility agreements for Clear Creek Tahoe. You know, with it being a reduction in the number of units, there will actually be more service, or, you know, certainly service available for these six lots. We have also received recently, in the last three days, the will serve letter for water from Douglas County as well, to serve these six lots. And the total number of lots for the development is not changing, 384. The overall site access and lot configuration for Unit Five, as well as the remainder of the development. And then, yeah, like I said, we have a few water and sewer will serve letters that we've already received. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
I have two questions. Last time we saw you, you said, "This is the last time we're going to see you."
This would be the official last time. Yeah, we did have a change in the type of lot, to your point there. As you can see, these are lauded, and so they're a little bit more spread out and diverse. We think this would be a better product for the home sites in the area. It's been the thing that we've sold the most of at Clear Creek Tahoe, so this different product, we didn't think would go as well.
Number two, should the total number of developed units change? Meaning, should they be less than 384? The number of TDRs for the entire project will remain the same?
Correct? Yeah. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Jim?
First of all, I had about five questions, a supplemental answered. I'm really good. Concern more than a question, and that's the hydrology, looking, when you stand on that land and look at that mountain, you're kind of worried how that's going to result in a flash flood or a, an event like that. I'm not an engineer, so I probably don't understand all the details. But that'd be my only concern, otherwise the package was complete, and I really appreciate you answered all my other questions, so.
I can provide a response on the drainage if you'd like. So this is a smaller catchment than is, or has been for the other phases. It's, even though there is a mountainside nearby, actually, most of that drainage is flowing away from there, not towards the Unit Five area. It's going both more southerly and then more west towards the Unit Four phase, which was already developed. And so the Unit Five area will have a much smaller detention basin. We're still, you know, required to mitigate our pre versus post condition, and we will certainly do that for the new roadway we're putting in. But there will not be a lot of offsite generated from that, or offsite that we need to take in from that existing drainage.
Thank you.
Don't sit down. So I have a question about the small detention basin that's on Lot 401. That looks to be part of the private property. Is that detention basin going to be the responsibility of that lot owner? Or is the maintenance and assurance that that detention basin will function properly part of the HOA's responsibility? Whose detention basin is that?
Yeah, so it will be the HOA's. We have had detention basins on lots before. Usually, we will carve them out with a slope and grading and drainage easement. That's what we do for all of our slopes, so that we can maintain those, but same with our drainage facilities. So that will actually be carved out of their building envelope that they can disturb on, and the HOA would be able to go in and make maintenance, you know, happen all year.
Okay. The other question I have is on the golf cart path that goes through Lot 401. So appears that the part of that golf cart path that's not on Lot 401 is going to be removed, but the part that is, is going to stay? Is that going to be available for people to walk on, or is that?
Yes, so it will be available for the people in the HOA to walk on. It's actually part of a overall trail system as well, so we want people to be able to access along that golf cart path. It will be an encumbrance to the lot as well, which we are proposing a private access easement for that golf cart path. This has been done on one other lot before. It's about a 10-foot wide, or a 20-foot wide path, or easement, excuse me. And so it will cross through that lot, and it will also impact that building envelope. But we intentionally have created actually more space from, away from that golf cart path easement for someone to build a home further away from it.
Looks like there's plenty of room for a pad for that development. But why would you take out that component that is just kind of southeast of that, or west of that?
You mean the parcel?
Why would you take out the golf cart path? It shows it's to be removed on the, on the plan.
Yeah, so there's a small piece of the golf cart path that will have to be replaced as part of the new road that's going in. I think that's maybe what you're talking about, but all of the other golf cart path will stay.
Okay. It looked like it was a pretty big chunk to take out, so.
Yeah, no, it's just the piece that will have to, so basically, the, where the golf cart path is now, in relation to Golf Club Drive, which is already existing, is it's further up on like a hillside, so it will have to cut down, meet that road, and then come back up. So it does look like a longer stretch, but it's really just the piece that will change in elevation.
All right, so it will just be replaced, not removed entirely?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Other questions?
I have one.
Okay, Dan?
Yeah, thank you very much for a very complete package, and obviously, we're likening the fact that it's a reduction of density in that area. My question is really related to the overall development, and it's just an opportunity to ask it here, and it has to do with fire safety. In the couple decades that this project has been conceived and now realized, obviously, fire danger in that part of the Carson Range has seemingly increased. And I'm wondering if the development has taken appropriate steps to meet that fire danger, building materials, defensible space? What can you tell us?
Yeah, so I'll do my best. I am not the fire manager at Clear Creek Tahoe, but I'm aware of what they're doing. So they do have 24-hour onsite management. You know, certainly in the recent fire risk that came, I think it was two years ago now, the site was evacuated, and they used the northern entrance, which is the current, you know, entrance that people go in and out of. But there is a secondary emergency access road to the south that goes down through Jax Valley for the development, so there's two places they can go. And so there wasn't a need to use that for this fire, but certainly, it's something that they looked into again. And as far as defensible space goes, you know, certainly, we, in Clear Creek Tahoe, we follow more stringent standards, similar to homes in Tahoe. And so we are putting more space, defensible space between houses. That is a Clear Creek Design Review requirement, not necessarily a Douglas County requirement, but that is the extra steps that they're taking in order to do that.
Thank you.
Kirk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of minor clarifications or questions for Lucille, and maybe Tom, you want to join in on this one too, because it's in your bailiwick probably. Lucille, we, you say on the packet on page 55, you're talking about the reduction in lots for Unit Phase Five from 19 to six. You further go on to talk about the total number of 384 units is not changed for the Clear Creek Tahoe planned development. So there is a distinction maybe, or a difference between units and lots, or Chris, if you want to join in on this question? So you're not reducing the number of units, because as you said, you want to apportion for the HOA all of the fees based on units. You don't want to have a reduction in units, but you will have a reduction actually in lots. Am I mixing things up, or?
No, I agree with the way you said it, and apologize if I did not make that clear enough. Yes, so the number of units would not change, so those 13 units are not, those 13 additional units from Unit Five would not get built until in the future, potentially, but the six lots are proposed to be built. And so, yes, there's a delta of the 13 to sum up the 384 units.
Okay. And then, Lucille, and going back to page 50, when you talk about the evaluation and you talk about the TDRs, you say, TDRs are associated with this project, and some have been certified. This may come up at the Board of County Commissioners, because I'm sure they, they look at the TDR question carefully. Is there a process that, and Tom, you can jump right in if you're a better person to answer this, is there a process that you go for, forward with, when the developer acquires the TDRs and then you certify them? And that's just an ongoing process as they build out the development? Am I kind of getting this reasonably correct?
Yeah, we've, we've modified the process on how, how folks are going to be recording these, and we should have had it done at each final map. We got a letter from them originally that said we have the 384 TDRs, but they were never applied to individual phases. So they are reconciling that in this next final map, and, and it'll be, it'll be on the record then at that point, on where they have actually been recorded, and which lots came from where, and, you know, those kinds of, yeah, it's, it's quite the detail to provide on a final map, but it is, it is going to be required from now on.
Thank you. We always trust you to dot all the i's and cross all the t's. You're very thorough about that, so we appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Actually, it's Kate who's getting the gray hair from doing the TDR.
Yeah, Kate.
Thank you, Kate.
A.J. and Kate, for sure. Also, Dan, the Fire Department adopted WUI, the, those provisions and code also for, for the, the defense area, defensible space area also. I believe that they are doing maps now, or preparing maps for each of these houses at the building permit phase, and the Fire Department is responsible for reviewing those. I think I even have to do it for my house out in Johnson Lane. But, but anyway, that's, it's a requirement now, just so you know.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing else, I will open public comment. Seeing no one rise, I will close public comment. Any other comments from the planning commissioners?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to ask A.J. for a clarification. We do have the one agenda item with four parts on it, and then the recommended motion is to approve the resolution 2025-01. But A.J., am I correct, this includes a master plan amendment? And traditionally, master plan, or by definition, master plan amendments require two-thirds vote. So if we just do this in one motion, I don't see any problem with that, but from a procedural standpoint and from looking forwardly on the board action, would we, we need, and the board need, two-thirds for approval of this action that we're taking today?
Thank you. A.J. Haynes for the record. If it's all presented in a single motion, which is how it's described in your packet, then for it to be effective, you would need the two-thirds vote. You could separate it out into pieces and approve each aspect of this application, or each one of the four applications individually. If, if the larger motion were to fail for some reason, you could, you could attempt it to do it that way. it that way.
The motion is found on page 44 of our packets. Do we have someone willing to make motion? Kirk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2025-01 and recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the requested master plan amendment, zoning map amendment, tentative subdivision map modifications, and specific plan revisions as presented, because the required findings have been met.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Kirk Walder, seconded by James McCallum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I want to thank you, Lucille, and thank you, Chris. It's now time for closing public comment. Seeing no one rise, I will close. Paul, you want to make closing public comment?
Very quickly, I just wanted to thank every Commissioner up here, as well as the public, many of whom are not here, that sent me wonderful emails and messages while I was undergoing the medical procedure for the last three weeks, and I appreciated it very, very much, because it gets pretty lonely in a, in a hospital room. Thanks. It just shows what good people are in Douglas County.
No, it just shows that we were bored. I'll close public comment, and Paul is glad, and we're really glad to have you back. Thank you all. I will adjourn this meeting of the Planning Commission.